There you go.
Should I stand?
I'd like to welcome all who are listening or viewing the meeting of the Kansas City Board of Public Utilities, whether in person or through technology. This meeting is being recorded both on video and audio. During the public comments section of the agenda, community members who wish to speak to the board will be asked to provide their name and address, and then they will be given five minutes at the podium to speak. Members of the public using Zoom that wish to address the board, they will need to use the raised hand feature at the bottom application or window to signal that they wish to address the board during the public comments section. Members of the public connected by phone only need to press the star nine to indicate they wish to address the board in the public comments section. And those attending in person need to sign up sheet in the signup sheet that's located by the entry. Comments are limited to five minutes, and they should be delivered directly to the board. These are comments, these are, as these comments are public, the board would caution the visitors not to disclose personal account information or to disclose account information on an account that is not in their name. Staff will not provide individual account information or history of anybody in an open meeting. As always, the public may also email or call the BPU with any concerns. The agenda and the presentations may be found on the BPU website, or if you're using Zoom, they will also appear on your screen. My name is Mary Gonzalez, and I'm member at large, position one, and I'm currently the board chairman. Other members of our board and our staff include Bill Johnson, our general manager, David Haley, position two, who is connected to us by Zoom tonight, Tom Groneman, who represents second district, and he's currently our board secretary. Bob Myland represents the first district, Jeff Bryant represents third district, and Rose Mulvaney Henry, who's normally sitting right here, is member at large and the board vice chair, she's also connected by Zoom tonight. Angela Lawson is our deputy chief counsel. I would ask that you please put your phones on silent, and I need for you to be aware that our microphones are very sensitive, and they can pick up and record comments that are made pretty much anywhere in the room. So that's just a reminder to you. Before we begin our meeting, would you please rise and join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Like to take roll call, please.
Roll call Bryant.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Groneman.
Here.
Haley. I'll come back. Well, or Myland. Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
Haley.
Before I ask for a motion to approve the regular session agenda of December, are there any comments or questions on our agenda for tonight's meeting?
This is Jeff, move to approve.
It's been moved and seconded. Angela, roll call, please.
Roll call Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Myland.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
All right, I will next call for a motion to approve the minutes of the work session of November sixteenth. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? If not, I would ask for a motion to approve.
This is Jeff, move to approve.
This is Tom, I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve those minutes. Roll call, please, Angela.
Roll call Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Myland. Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
And next, I'm going to call for a motion to approve the regular session of November sixteenth, 2022, unless there are any comments, corrections, or additions.
This is Jeff, move to approve.
My second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt these minutes. Roll call, please.
Roll call Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Myland. Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
And now to the meeting over to Mr. Johnson.
All right, thank you, Madam President. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Got a list of several people wanting to speak tonight, so I'll ask Curtis Martin to come up first. Podium, if you can restate your name and address for the record, please. Like to make sure we get it recorded.
Oh, Curtis Martin. Twenty-one fifteen.
Five minutes to address the board.
A C K. My main reason today is about this raise that Mr. Johnson is about to receive and has been voted on to be given to him. And I'm asking the board members to take another vote and consider turning it down until it can be approved by the people. And the donation to the United Way Campaign Fund, we would like for you to turn that down until it's confronted and voted on by the people again, too. Is my main concern today for this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person waiting to speak is Susan Stevens. You can come up, restate your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Susan Stevens, forty-eighteen Silver Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas, six-six-one-zero-six. And I'm a member of the Community Conscious Action Network, and we're just really urging you all to vote no on this upcoming budget, and I echo what the gentleman before me said. When there are people suffering from shut offs who who are overwhelmed with their bills, we don't need to be giving tremendous raises. We don't need to be giving a donation to the United Way. I think the money that we give, the federal money that we get should go to help the people of our community, the neediest people in our community, and that needs to be our top priority. And thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, before before any more speakers, you might explain what the the money that goes to the United Way and how it's restricted on allocation.
Right, okay, be happy to. So BP has a long history of donating through the United Way, and at one time, many of you may have known that there was a Wanaug County chapter of the United Way that was located just right down the street from us. I was a long-serving board member, Ms. Henson in the back of the room, which has been a board member, there's probably one, well, I don't see her, there's been a board member, Patrice at some point has been a board member, and that being said, over the years, when it was only Wanaug County, BP was always either number two or the number three company in all of Wanaug County where the employees made donations to the United Way. So we could never pass general motives for a number of years until the general motives made a different corporate decision. But BP was always in that number two or number three position. Those dollars that that the employees freely give to nonprofit groups around around the community, the BP board at some point later came back and said, well, we're going to match that and give those type, those same type of dollars out to the community through utility assistance program. That utility assistance program has been managed by United Way. There is a small administrative fee, but over ninety percent of the dollars that we send to United Way comes back to the community to help people pay their utility bills. The other part that came later is another piece called the hardship program. So there's another funding source that goes to the United Way to help people that fall into special hardship categories, and those dollars are made public. So even though monies are sent to the United Way, United Way does not distribute those monies in any other way other than bringing it back to help people pay their utility bills.
And that is only in Wanaug County, it's not the utility bills around the around the city. It it, those dollars can only be spent in our county for residents' utilities, so.
Second piece to that is there's no longer a Wanaug County United Way. You know, it was merged into the Greater Kansas City United Way. And I am a chair, I'm a board member for the Greater Kansas City United Way. One of the things and the reasons I had an interest in moving from Wanaug County to become part of that group is to make sure that all of the United Ways commitments to Wanaug County stay intact, that just because we're going to a greater corporate operation across the metro, I didn't want Wanaug County any support, anything else to be lost. And there was, there is a commitment that the Greater Kansas City United Way chapter made is to maintain all the services that that Wanaug County was making forward to Wanaug County citizens, and that's still intact. So again, the overwhelming majority of the dollars that are sent to United Way is brought back in into this community to help. They are in a better position to help manage and distribute those funds. Otherwise, we're just adding more and more staff people, and I don't know that we can do it cheaper and more efficient than, I'm not going to say we can't do it more efficient, but I don't know that we can do it at a lower cost. So that was one way, and then that that became a kind of a management decision years and years ago. We've been operating that way for some time.
Hey, Bill, this is Rose.
Yeah, just a minute, Rose, we have a Mr. Johnson wants to speak again.
Martin.
Mr. Martin.
Well, I wanted to comment on the United Way situation because he's brought that to my attention since I brought his, he bringing it back. So I'd like to comment on some of his statements.
Can you do it in one minute?
Yeah, okay, I agree on contributing money to United Way, that's a good deal. But the fact of these dollars that your guys, these board members are contributing, contributing to that fund come out of our pockets, and it should be brought to the people before y'all decide to do what y'all want to do with this money. That's what's out of line, y'all making these decisions on your own instead of bringing it to the peoples. And that's what needs to be done, with all these decisions being made by the board members. All these votes y'all taking on, carrying on, y'all doing it like y'all running everything. Y'all elected by the people, for the people, y'all need to start working for the people.
So I would say this, Mr. Martin, part of the monies that's going over there are monies that the individual employees are donating themselves that has nothing to do with this board, okay?
Well, there are no, no way us knowing that.
Well, that's why, that's why I'm informing this group that we have many, many employees that that make a fair share of contribution to the United Way every month, and some even exceed that. So those are dollars that employees are freely giving to United Way to help help Wanaug County citizens and nonprofit groups within the community.
That's the, that's the way it's being donated, I understand, that's.
That's, that's true.
Okay, Rose, what was your comment?
I was just going to ask Bill if he could inform the public, the dollar amounts that are earmarked that go to the United Way. I understand that there seems to be a ten percent administrative fee based on your ninety percent comment. So can you just let them know what that, what those dollar figures are?
I can't hear what she's saying. The dollar, the amount of dollars, the dollar figures. Jeanetta, can I get you to come up, or Lori, either one, if because I don't want to misspeak on what that amount is.
Lori, did you hear the question Rose posed?
I think, so what the utility contributes to United Way?
Well, minus the administrative cost, I think is her, is Rose's question.
It's a hundred and five thousand dollars, so ten percent of that is what?
A thousand fifty?
Yeah. And then we have the hardship program, which is a hundred and twenty thousand.
Right.
The twelve hundred.
So twelve hundred.
Okay. Rose, does that answer your question, too, before I move on?
It does, thank you.
Okay, next.
The next, next customer, Joyla, Jayla, and I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing it. Okay. And I don't have an address or a phone number, so if you can state your address and phone number for the record, please.
Don't have to do it in front of everyone, give my address.
Yes.
I do.
If you can.
It's a public meeting and it's on record.
I signed up online and gave my address and number and stuff on there.
You don't have to do your phone number, you just give us your name and address.
Just your name and address, we don't have to have your phone number.
My name's Jayla Atkinson, and I'm at thirty-seven thirty Metropolitan in Kansas City, Kansas. I'm going to keep it pretty short because I want the rest of you guys to have time to speak. But I just want to say, like, I sat in your guys' budget meeting the other day, and I heard you speak about needing to hire people, but worrying if those people would even want to live in your county because it's low income, which to me just shows a lot about how you value these people and how you think of them and how you view them, so that's all.
Next person sign up is Beto. And if you can repeat your name and address on the record, please.
Yes, hi, my name is Beto Lugo Martinez, my address is thirty-seven thirty Metropolitan Avenue. I'm with an organization, Cleaner Now, an environmental justice organization here in Kansas City, doing a lot of work on making sure that the communities that are most impacted by environmental racism such as this are really, are really making sure that they have a seat at the table, right? Making sure that the inequitable distribution of wealth and resources do make it to these communities that have been impacted for many years. And for, and you know, the lack of, I want to add a little bit, I was here at the budget meeting as well, and going through these documents and just understanding the whole dynamics of the unified government and and the BPU, and the lack of transparency that exists, right, between both, and the lack of, actually, many times having a very equitable public participation process where people can actually contribute to the decision-making. And I think it's time that we look at that in a different way, not just here in this BPU, but across the board, right? Whether it's every G in their IRP or the STP, whatever acronym we use nowadays, we need to make sure that community members have a voice and a choice in their entity choices, that they are part of that discussion. You know, one of the things that we're really concerned about is also the budget appropriations that are projected for twenty twenty-three. I need to go more into detail on this, but one thing that I noticed that there's a request of some funding for twenty twenty-three to cover, you know, whatever it is that you you need, right, to move forward, whether it's budgets or salaries or whatever you need just to keep functioning. But what I, what we noticed is that this tax that you all have can cover what you want, that tax, the ten percent, that ten percent from that, what, pay tax in lieu of payment can actually cover that. But what we noticed through this process that some of that money is going to the unified government, and we want to know why it goes to the unified government, because you shouldn't need to ask to say, we need this money, but if you have that money already and you're giving it to the unified government, there's, I mean, we want to understand, you know, it's not just as an organization, we're not here to just say, don't do this, don't do that. We want to understand and be part, be part of the decision-making process. Recently, we had to intervene in the every G IRP, the KCC and all that, because public participation lacks in all these spaces. All the community concerns were in this document, and I am prepared to also share with you, submitted as public comment on the twenty-first, you know, just so it can be on record. And so because we continue to see the mismanagement of funding, and maybe it's not, maybe that's not the issue. But if we don't know, and we're not consulted as constituents who pay taxes, then we don't know, right? But once we know, we want to make sure that these move forward fairly and equitable. And one thing, you know, could be that we start thinking about, how do we have an oversight committee to oversee where all this spending goes? It's just public transparency, right? This is a public utility, so it's owned by everyone here, all of you, we all own it, not just a few of us, right? But it seems that continues to be, right, corporate power profits over people, and people are struggling, people are being shut down, being left out in the cold, right? We have the cold weather rule that's in place, and you know, people are still being shut down. And I, you know, I didn't want to get into the 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 money that goes to, for example, the United Way, right? But this is a system that feels like a system that is meant to keep people where they are. When we're giving money from here, here, let's go to this charity and the charity we want. When somebody needs help, call us and we'll help you pay with your bill. But it seems like it's a system to keep people where they are. So we want to make sure that that is also looked at very carefully and that people weigh in, whether it's your employees that give it to this, into this part of, part of money. Maybe your employees, maybe you all, we all collectively can come up, well, how do we utilize this money to make sure we put it in a different pot and make sure it does make it back to the community rather than getting that ten percent administrative and going to a charity that's keeping people where they are in the ghetto, not being able to come up with that, right? This is what we need to change, so it's not just one thing, and I acknowledge, we acknowledge that. It's a lot, it's a lot of issues, but I wanted to make sure I raised that that concern. And so for the sake of the time, you know, I want to make sure that you understand that Cleaner Now started here in Wanaug County, been around since twenty thirteen, really grasped its efforts on the ground, doing a lot of work around air pollution, making sure the regulations and environmental protection, A D C, K H C are there also, taking care, making sure there's protections, because there's a lot of health hazards, and this is one of them, energy insecurity, energy poverty is one of them. So I'll stop there, but I just want to give those comments, and I would love for you all to invite us to be part of that table to have these discussions. Thank you.
Have a few comments. Mr. Beto, thank you. Thank you for all of, all that you spoke to, it was quite a bit there, thank you. I would ask, I'll first start off by asking, have you had any conversations with your unified government commissioner about the pilot?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Have you had any conversations with your unified government commissioner about the pilot?
About the pilot? Yes. Yes, I actually have reached out to commission, I wish you was, you know, I have reached out over other issues regarding other local issues, and it seems very exclusive, I don't want to think exclusive, I, I haven't really heard back from him, but I continue to reach out to him just to have a conversation, it's not about a specific issue, just to get to know him and really, you know, like people, right, human, like, just kind of like when we come here, people come here, I was here the other day, and many come here to pay their bills, and sometimes they just want that human element. We, we had this conversation, I think Jeff and I, where, right, Jeff, where people, some people, and this is the thing, some people don't have the resources during the day and spend time in a healthcare center. Some people go there because they're around people. This is so important, the recreated space where people can just walk in and have that human.
I wanted to start there, because I do want to get to the pilot discussion.
Yes.
So, so by, so there's a charter ordinance that the unified government has in place that that determines how much money the unified, the Board of Public Utility collects from all of its citizens in way of pilot. And unified government is completely in control of what that percentage of our overall revenue is. So it's a percentage of all of our revenue. Okay, they can go between five percent and fifteen percent of all the revenue that we collect. So currently, it's at eleven point nine percent. BP only collects that money from the public. As you pay your bill, your bill also has a line item on there called pilot. So you pay that, and every month BP turns around and transfers that amount of money over to the unified government, in addition to the other things we collect, trash, water pollution, everything else, stormwater on the bill, those are all turned over to the unified government. So there's no way that we can take the pilot dollars and redirect it in any other way for utility use or for any other community benefit purpose. That is only the sole, that's sole decision rests with unified government on how they use. I would ask you to continue to talk to unified government to see where those pilot dollars go and how are they being used? Because BP has nothing to do with that.
Yes, yes, and what I noticed.
The other, the other thing that I would say is, unlike some of the other utilities you mentioned, we're a nonprofit utility, we're up, we are public power, so there's not a profit built into our operations. We operate based on a cost of service model, so what we try to do is deliver electric and water services based on what it costs us to deliver. And that's why our rates are very competitive, and and I have no problem comparing our rates to every G rates anytime, any day of the week, so.
Yes, and that that makes sense, you know, in Johnson County, even their tax, that tax is very minimal compared to here. So we need to have these conversations, and that's our goal, right, to continue to have these conversations and be in these spaces.
The pilot is a discussion you have to have with the unified government.
Okay, I, we will make sure we reach out to them on this issue.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Next is Gustine Green. Your name and address for the record again.
Good evening, Gustine Green, twenty-two oh eight House Clavino. My concern is, I want to know what was the purpose of unified government and BPU merging together anyway in the first place to be paid, why unified government want to be paid of our dollars on these taxes? Because these taxes are very high. Sometimes my taxes be sometimes higher than my light bill. And my light bill ain't got no business being over two hundred dollars a month in a little six-room cute little house. And then if a storm come and a tree fall on the line of BPU, they'll knock that tree down on my ground and say, call BPU to come and get it up. Who do that? But when you do call BPU to come and get it up, they take over a week or two. And that's not fair. I mean, we living in this old county, as we all call it. It should be looking just like jail, Overland Park, you know, we pay enough taxes in this community where we be, should be able to, you know, have this better than what it is for us. Twenty twenty-three about to come up, our bill's going to hike up more on the pilot, like, that I don't even know nothing about. You know, but it's going for unified government. So some of our money coming out of our pocket is paying unified government and BPU, two, we paying two people, right?
Right.
Okay, I just, I'm just concerned.
Quick question, yeah, I'll, I'll let the board weigh in.
Because I'm a pole black girl.
Okay. So about a year, almost a year ago, we came up with a different design on our bill. So the bill you get today, it's not the same bill that you got two years ago. It's been redesigned to kind of separate the BPU charges from the unified government charges.
But unified government's still on there.
It's still on it.
The pilot and what else is there, the trash?
Yes.
We paying for, we paying for about five, five or six fees on there.
Right.
Which comes to about maybe almost a hundred dollars.
Right, so the whole idea behind that was, there was a lot of, a lot of customers that said they were confused on how the old bill was designed, so by us separating them, I know, I know that the U G charges are still on the bill, but my hope is that would give the public a better understanding of, here's the money that only goes to BPU, here's the rest of the money that goes to the unified government. So when you have those, those conversations with your, with either a board member, you could talk about the BPU charges, which are electric and water, or all the other things, you'll be in a better position to have those conversations with your U G commissioner, because we just collect and pass that through.
What?
Yours is probably Johnson.
Johnson, so we gonna get him out of there, right?
So, so, so the thing about the U G charges, because I've been on the board since, I've been on the board since twenty-eleven, and it's, it's always, I mean, that's been always, in my opinion, one of the hardest things for, for all of us, the public, to understand is, you know, if if I got a water and light bill that was just my water and lights, it'd be, I would, I would never question, I mean, it's, that's just normal, what everybody else gets. But because the U G, who owns the BPU, because it's a public utility, and the U G is the overarching entity for the county, so, so they technically own the BPU and the properties of the BPU. So they tell us, you're going to collect this bill for us so that they don't have to have their own collection. But the thing that I've always had a problem with it is that, that means if, if my bill is two hundred dollars and a hundred of it's BPU and a hundred of it's city, if I miss paying my trash part of it or my stormwater or something like that, I, I can't just pay a portion of my bill because the U G doesn't have a way to turn off your trash, so it's easy. And things like that, so they, they, they tell the BPU that we have to be their billing agency. So we have no choice.
So they're the bad dogs.
No, it's just, it's just that they have monies that they have to have to be able to function, too.
But do you think that's fair?
You know.
That's a question.
Without getting into a long, but I mean, if I, if I go very long, then it's going to cut in the time other people have to speak.
But I, the, these people that we're steady voting for, you know, it's time to just.
I I would suggest, and in my comments at the end of the night, it's going to be, I suggest to attend as many public meetings. And this is how you educate yourself about your public utility. I, I invite you to always be here.
Where's my boy David Haley?
Uh, he's traveling for for something, I'm not sure, but he's supposed to be online listening.
Okay, thank you.
Next customer is Danny, Danny. I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name. So if you can pronounce your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Danny Loma, one three two four South Fiftieth, Kansas City, Kansas. I would like this board to vote down the budget. Um, so I'm just gonna read. The U G Commission should instruct B P U to end all water or electric shut offs that might put customers at health risk. U G Commission should remove unrelated fees or taxes on the B P U bill. No one should be put at risk of losing water or power because of inappropriate city charges. And U G Commission should invest in planning and grant writing for federal dollars to fund a transparent planning process with K C K communities. And city councils to access federal funding, lower customer bills. Eliminate coal pollution in our community and keep us safe and housed by facilitating weatherization. Energy efficiency, rent and other assistance programs for low income customers. Um, so I just want to say, I. I'm an engineer and I've been traveling for work and now I'm back in city. This is my home city. And for a while I didn't want to come back because there weren't. I don't know, I guess there weren't any like good renewable energy options that I I thought. And now that there are and that the city is coming out with really good incentives. And I get to be here and be with my family. It kind of makes me sad that. Boards like this or organizations like utilities aren't taking advantage of all the great things that are happening in this city. Um, and one of the cities I I traveled to, I was in Texas when that really big and awful winter storm happened. And I would just hate for that to happen here in Kansas City because it happened in Texas because they were unprepared. Because of. You know, like, I don't want to name names, but we know who refused to weatherize and they were just not prepared. For um the, the challenges that came with that winter storm. And here we do have, we've had winter storms and we can be prepared. And yet we are choosing to increase prices and shut people off and then put them at risk. I just think that's really unfortunate and it should not be happening in the first place. And um. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next person, Thomas Gordon. You can restate your name and address for the record. You have five minutes.
Thomas Gordon, twenty-five, twenty-one North Seventh Street, Kansas City, Kansas six six one oh one. First of all, I'd like to uh thank the uh board of commissioners for making the time available for the public. And I want to commend the public for showing up and speaking up. I know that. It's a, it's a difficult task to run a, any organizations during these times. But when you have a name of the Board of Public Utilities. And the decisions are made without the voice of the public, it's kind of like, uh, why did we have that name? We talk about the, a lot of the things that were talked about. Uh, I don't want to re-echo, but I support everything that has been said. Um, one of the things that came out was the rage that. The president was getting and was brought to my attention that it was pretty close to what the President of the United States is making. And I thought that was a little odd that the President of the United States makes four hundred thousand dollars plus a few other amenities. And that the uh Board of Public Utilities President was getting three hundred and some thousand dollars for representing less than two hundred thousand people. But. I'm not there in your shoes and I don't see all the things that you have to go and where all that money go to. So rather than to come up and be judgmental about what's wrong and what's right. I think it was brought out that the public needs to be a part of the process of making decisions. And I think that if we came about with something that was presented to the public where that we had a meaningful voice. In the decision making rather than just something to say, okay, you made a decision, but we don't have to uh enforce it. The public needs to have a compelling voice to make sure that if they speak about something, it doesn't get overrun. Or voted down or go into an executive meeting where that is no longer discussed. The part about uh the pay in lieu of taxes, the pilot tax. For a while there, I thought that was had a sunset on it. I don't know what happened to it at this point in time, but it continues to go on. And I heard another person speak about that their uh taxes. Are higher than their utility bill. I can attest to that. You know, I walk around and have one light on with LEDs and everything else. And I look in all the uh trash and pilot and other taxes are higher than my utility use. And then the part that um I believe it was Commissioner Bryant brought up or maybe it was Gorman talking about the fact that the U G. Is utilizing the Board of Public Utilities to um. Take monies away from us because the Board of Utilities, they know that if we don't pay our entire bill. Then the Board of Utilities is assessed with the fact that they have to disconnect our services, which can cause some medical issues. And I think that's unfortunate as well. So. My question, and I will wait for a response, is what powers do the. Board of Public Utilities Commissioners actually have in representing us the people? I'd like to have a response.
I'll, I'll, I'll tell you that the way, you know, that I understood at work before I ran and I, I spent about a year. Coming to meetings and talking to people before I even ran for the office was that, that the board. So there's six of us. There's three of us that are citywide. So we are responsible, you know, three of us are responsible to. Understand the needs, you know, mine, I'm district three, pretty much everything south of I seventy. So I got to go to neighborhood meetings and things like that. It's hard to get communication, but it's our, we were elected. By the people, by the voters in in my district, I was elected to be their voice. At the table for you guys. So that's why I do go, you know, we go to meetings, we have our phone numbers and our emails are on the website, you know, for people. You call me, I, you may get my voicemail because I may be at work, my regular job, but. I will respond. I will get in touch with you, email me, I'll check into things, but that's, that's what you do is you guys. You know, it's, it's jaybryant@bpu.com, alright? That's what we're elected to do. I have to hear all the voices so that I understand what all the wants and needs are. The reality is there's only so many dollars to be able to go to so many things. So you have to do the critical things first, which is making sure that we are delivering. Reliable power and clean drinking water. Those are the two most, that's what the B P U is supposed to do. This is a business. They, they sell product, they sell water and electricity. We are just a also, unfortunately, a collection agency for the unified government.
Well, I realize that Commissioner Bryant, what I was asking is what powers? Or what authority does the commissioners have to represent us when we're voicing our opinion and our displeasure about being exploited? From the unified government with these taxes? What powers do you actually have to do other than to listen to us?
As, as, just like the commission, the set of commissioners make the decisions that apply and the governmental levels. Across Wyandotte County. They don't come over here and tell us how to run the B P U. We don't go over there and tell them. The only thing they can do is they can say you do have to collect, but they don't, they don't tell us what our budget can be. They do have quite a bit of control over, like, we have to go to them when we're doing bonds. Like when we do a repair, a huge update or repair to a coal fire plant or, or. One of our gas plants or something, we have to go get bond money. We have to go to them to get permission to do it.
Let me be more direct then. Does the Board of Commissioners for the Board of Public Utilities have any authority to go? And force the uh voice of the people to the commissioners and say, we want the bill separated and you do.
No, we, we do not, we do not have that. If we did, if we bid it, it would have already been separated. Yes, yes, it would have because, because I, I don't, I don't agree with it being on there, but.
Hello.
Hi, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, can I?
I'm telling you that we no longer want that.
Okay, I.
Hello.
I don't know that um I will get through with everybody, but.
Is my time up?
Mr. Gordon, I think your time is up.
Hello.
I, I was sharing it, I was sharing it with him.
Mary, you can go home if you got something to do. Jeff Bryant, Jeff Bryant must be incoherent because the people telling them things and nothing changing in this utility government.
Well, this, I'd like to make a final comment if I could, take that one minute. I would like to see the Board of Commissioners to put together some type of response to us, the people. On the things that we have proposed to you with a response to it as to how we can bring apart a resolution. That will satisfy the people and allow the Board of Public Utilities to continue to operate. Could you push possibly do that in writing? Not just voice and that lets us know that you heard what we are saying and you're responding to it. Is, can we do that?
Hello. I don't know if I can get through this or not. It keeps pushing. Where's Gonzalez?
No, I said the board, I said for the Board of Public Utility Commissioners to put something in writing saying, you heard our voices. And this is what we're going to try to do. I'm not asking you to go up and try to force anybody to, and we can do that through the power of vote. But I'm just asking you, I'm asking that question. That's not a statement, it's a question. Can you put something together in writing just to respond to the questions that we put out here?
I will, I will talk to the board about that.
Thank you very much.
Talk to the board about that. We, we need to move through the list.
Mister Johnson, Mister Johnson. Mister Valles.
So next, the next person is Ty Gorman.
Mister John.
Gonzalez.
Hello.
Mister Haley, go ahead.
This is Haley. Oh, thank you, thank you. This is David Haley. Uh, the technology has failed us this evening. I've been on since five o'clock. I've listened to much of what has occurred, not only during the work sessions, but certainly since this has begun. Uh, thank you, uh, President Gonzalez and Mister um Mister Johnson. And thank the members that are there this evening. I am forced to be at a meeting out of town. And I knew this a month ago. Sorry that I missed it. To the last question, Mister Gordon raised. And I'd like for Mister Bryant, who has weighed in and others, to say that very clearly, we are being held. Um, as the collection agency for many unified government taxes. How do we? Separate ourselves for those of us that need electricity and those of us who need water? From the taxes that are being foisted upon us by the B P U. That's a very good question. We cannot, Mister Gordon, and others that are there. Segregate ourselves from that U G responsibility. The U G, the unified government owns the B P U. And because of that ownership, we pay our taxes month by month by month. With the penalty of being out of compliance and thereby being disconnected. If we don't pay those taxes that are due our local government. I have asked for, and I think other members of the board at least, to consider a resolution. To share with the unified government, with our commissioners, those ten members across the street. Of the U G to say that as we reevaluate now under this new administration, what the role between the unified government. And the Board of Public Utilities is, as they look at our, our charter. That we might very clearly say that we would like to have a separate billing, two bills. The taxes, which are like the pilot. Trash collection, sewer and other fees that are unified government related. And then those that are consumption. Assumption is how much we use when we turn on our A C or, or how much we use when we run our showers, whatever. And that those two bills would be one for each of our ratepayers slash taxpayers to consider. I hope that resolution may be taken up by this board and that your participation this evening, I appreciate that, would be considered. We have no cause and effect unless the commissioners, who we also elect, those ten commissioners and the mayor. Would consider having that happen, but at least we would be very clear that the people are tired of having to pay our taxes every month. Uh, at the penalty of losing our utility service if those taxes are not paid that we as a pass through for the unified government have. Thank you.
I am.
Yes, uh, if you can state your name and address for the record, please, in five minutes.
Thank you. My name's Ty Gorman. I live at two eight four three Parkwood Boulevard, Northeast K C K six six one zero four. I would like to ask the majority of board members who are with the people here to vote no on the budget until the following commitments are made. One, to not shut off anyone's utilities unsafely. Two, to advocate with us to remove all these flat fees and regressive fees from the bill. Three, to work with us to lower our bill in twenty twenty-three. I saw, I'll, I'll start with two since everybody's been talking about it and I saw Miss, Miss Gonzalez uh put her head in her hands because. You know, we realized that the commission is, no, 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 we realized that it's in the U G commission. So it's not enough to just have a separate bill for these regressive flat fees that are on people. Who make, it's a higher percentage of the income for the people who report us. That's a regressive tax. It's bad public policy to put these fees on utility bills. It's bad public finance. We realize that you don't have direct control over that. Asking you to advocate with us with the commission to not only have a separate bill, Mister Haley, but to remove these fees and replace them with progressive taxation that makes sense as good public finance. So that's the first thing. But, but back to my first point is the uh bill, like shutting people off. In the cold, in the, in the heat, in the, when they have medical issues, when they're old, when they're young. All of these things are unacceptable and they're, they are avoidable. I've presented to, to y'all, to the commission, much more detailed. Uh, lists of policies that can be used that are used in other municipal utilities throughout the country, even in the Midwest. That are much better than the policies that are currently being used in the B P U. Uh, those policies are too detailed for me to get into in two minutes, but I've uh happy to talk about until further. Basically, uh, there are dollars out there to pay for folks when they aren't able to pay the bill themselves. B P U is shutting them off immediately. And not helping the customers really get the dollars they need, not only from the United Way, which I've called the United Way. They just say, hey, go talk to one of these dozen organizations that get a little bit of money every month, who run out of money, who are understaffed. Who have a, not enough dollars to support everybody when there are other programs federally and state. That B P U can advocate with the people for to get those, that, that money and pay our bills and our debt retroactively. So stop cutting people off now, figure out how to pay the utility back on the back end with S E O money, K C C money, lie heat money. Billions of federal dollars are available. So that leads me to my third point. And my third point is you can lower our bills in twenty twenty-three. And this gets back to the federal dollars. In, in addition to the fees that can be removed from the commission side. The B P U side can push to get access to billions of dollars of federal money. To replace the expensive generation you have now with efficiency dollars, first of all, for the low income folks whose houses, who's who are paying two hundred dollars. Uh, because there's underinvestment in houses, not enough retrofits and efficiency dollars have gone into communities here. The B P U is a perfect. Uh, bridge for that money coming from the Department of Energy and coming from other organizations as well for municipal utilities. There's billions of dollars available for that kind of investment now and that costs twenty-five percent as much as it costs to create a kilowatt. And that costs 25% as much as the cost to create a kilowatt in Neiman Plant on 60th that also pollutes our community. It costs to fix a house that saves that much energy. So that's much cheaper. Also, solar is half the price. Wind is less than that. You guys have had an increase in renewable energy coming up, but now, what was that? Do I have one minute? Okay, thank you. Well, now there are, uh, half a dozen programs that I presented recently that can, uh, pay over 50% of the cost of remove, of clean energy that you invest in at this point. Above and beyond the free money that comes in on efficiency, the PTC, ITC, uh, Municipal Loan Guarantee Program, plus 10% adders on Environmental Justice Communities, which, yeah, this is a progressive, diverse community. We can and should be getting all the money that is being offered from the federal government and we can if you all help us prioritize it. So advocate with us at the commission to get rid of these regressive fees. Stop cutting people off when it's dangerous. There's, and it's, and you, and they have to prove, BPU has to prove that it's not dangerous to cut somebody off. That's the, that's the key to it. They can't just say, "Okay, well, I'll, I'll wrap it up now. Thank you so much for your time."
Thank you. Next customer is Reggie Jones. If you can come up and state your name and address for the record.
Brother speaking, my name is Reginald Jones. Uh, I live at 1220 Cleveland, Kansas City, Kansas, 66104. First of all, I'd like to commend, uh, the whole board for opening up, uh, this whole meeting for the public. Is, is...
Every meeting is open to the public, every other Wednesday of the week.
Yes, ma'am. I understand. Uh, one is that I'd like to vote, uh, no down that proposal until we get more information. I was listening to Mr. Bryant about, you know, it's hard to get information out or to communicate. It really means a lot to communicate. I've been, uh, getting a bill from, uh, BPU since 1977, when I got my first house. And the, would you, there's no problem for you giving me my bill. There should be no problem for you giving me information, communication, so that we can know what the, what the bottom line is, because if you don't communicate, then that's going to be bad because I hear negative information in the community about BPU, not communicating. I'm just want to let you know that. And this is my first time being here. And I think that you, we need, the whole city need to know what's going on. They need to know. And I don't like to be in the dark, you know, and I, so that's what I wanted to share with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jenny, that the, that was the last person on this list. Is there anybody else? I'm going to ask the person 1068 Webster. I'm sorry that I, I don't want to mispronounce your name, so... Okay, if you can come up. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes. My name is Lisa Walker Jaeger. Address 1068 Webster, as you just repeated. I don't like to give, uh, criticism without giving some constructiveness. Mr. Mila, how are you? I met you in Parkwood. We had a barbecue. But when I first met you, I met you when I moved back to Wyandotte County, Kansas. And I had just buried my husband and my, moved into my mother's home. Um, I was a single parent at that moment. And what you did do was you changed where we can, where we were able to get, because I had a problem trying to get here to pay my bill, because y'all had it set from nine to five and people that had jobs couldn't get here to pay their bill. And it was really, really crazy. So you extended the hours. Y'all finally got the hours and got them extended. So that was a plus. Mr. Johnson, uh, this is my first time meeting you. Um, I've also had a major surgery and I was able to take advantage of the assistance. So I do thank you all for that. Okay. Now, but what I do have a problem with is Jeff Bryant, you can't be for the people if you're not hearing what we're saying. Okay? If you're not sitting down, going back in front of the council and letting them know, "We need to make a change." Now, Mr. Johnson, I don't have no problem with nobody making $450,000, $500,000. I just wish my bank account could make that. Okay? But if you're not here making $500,000 just making a change or $450,000 just making a change for our community, that means if BPU is owned by Wyandotte County, then we need to change this monopoly. Okay? There was, there's no problem with trying to get other utility companies here in Wyandotte County. I suggest you start looking at that. Then you can get my, then you might can get 430, because you've been earning that. Okay? So that, that's one thing that I need to make sure. Now with this pilot tax, payment in lieu of taxes, how many homeowners are here? Can please raise your hand? Okay. These are all, majority of them are homeowners. And we know with payment in lieu of taxes, right? That means that's the difference between renting and owning. No, that's what it was originally brought for. We had somebody break it down for us, Ms. Gonzalez. But you can go ahead and speak. I'm listening, but don't take away from my time.
No, I'm not going to interject. Go ahead.
Okay. So with the payment in lieu of taxes, it's supposed to be for payment in lieu of taxes, the people that pay property taxes is what my understanding. Now, I could be wrong, but I'd really like to see that and get that to us. So as Mr. Gorman had a list, get us that documentation, because I want to read that. Because I'm telling you that there's no reason why I should be held captive in bondage, because this is called slavery and extortion, because we have no other way in order to pay our bills. Because if we pay our lights, our water, you are not a collection agency. You are a utility company and that's what is registered. It's not registered as a collection agency. So when you start looking at that, you have, and, 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 and when you, when you register yourself as a collection agency, then maybe we can understand that. So all these things need to be checked out, looked into, and changed. Now, the payment in lieu of taxes. I really, okay, I'm not even going to go there. I'm not going to go there. What I am going to say is, let's sit down and see what we can get done. Now, when there's a meeting call from the community, I like to see y'all show up, especially you, Mr. Johnson. You get $400,000, $500,000. Okay? Come on out the house. I'd like to know a half a millionaire, okay? Matter of fact, let me go shake your hand. I ain't never shook a half a millionaire. So, and the black man too, I like that. But what I'm saying to you is, is that we don't make that. We are lower income and a lot of people are fixed income and I'm standing here for the people who have been here. And they have to make a decipher whether to pay their utilities or have food in their house. This is how serious this is.
That was time.
Yes, it is time. Time for me to go pay my bill. But I want y'all to understand, not only are we not paying, we're paying our bill, but the quality of our water is terrible. Okay? The quality of our water is terrible.
Okay, your time's up, Ms. Jaeger. We've got two other people and some people on the phone.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Gonzalez.
Next customer, Louise Lynch.
I don't know if I'll be able to reach that, but I'm sure y'all can hear me. My name is Louise Lynch. I'm a KCK resident. And...
Would you state your address, please?
737 Miami Avenue. So I want to first say, I want to thank Tom Groneman and Rose Henry for coming out and meeting us where we needed to them, and we appreciate that. I want to thank Jeff for responding that he couldn't make it. Thank you for that. I think it's deplorable that Mr. Malone and Ms. Gonzalez couldn't even reply. That shows us, you don't respect us. You don't, you don't, you don't want us to matter. You couldn't even give a phone call, a response, nothing. There are, there are consequences for here as well as the commissioners in elections. We have elections and we have recalls. We need the board to listen and to act on our behalf, not ignore us and disrespect us or acknowledge us when it's election time or acknowledge us when they feel like. Not acceptable. My main, my, well, yeah, well, that starts with customer service, because I've put in several calls to Jeanetta Henson over the year and I can't remember getting one. That's the great service we pay for and with all the other taxes. Disgusting. Our first thing I wanted to say though, as far as the budget vote coming up, no. Vote no on this budget until we are able to come to some kind of agreement with community input in regards to our bills, in regards to our rates, in regards to the people needing medical necessities, including not being able to find the application on your site, not being able to get people to call back. There are people that have called into that number seven weeks ago, still have not been called back and no follow-up number. You get a recording. We pay more than to get a recording with no name and no follow-up. That's disgusting for people for a life support line. Who's life support? Yours or ours? Because you're not helping us at all. We've met Mr. Johnson a few times in regards to life support. We got one additional device added. It's not enough. There are many people with serious illnesses. There are many people less than one paycheck away from being evicted because they can't pay for their utilities. We need help. As far as this giving away hundreds and thousands of dollars to United Way is disgusting. I don't care if it's been the practice from the beginning of Christ. We are in these times. Giving that money away to United Way, I don't care if it's earmarked for Wyandotte. There is admin fees, whether they're 10%, 20%, 30%, they're at admin fees. And when they distribute the money to the 501(c)(3) and (4), they have admin fees. So who's not getting their share? The community. The UG has provisions to take that money directly and administer it and process it without any fees. Why are we not investigating that? Why are we not doing that? I don't want to hear about traditional practice. We are not wanting to be evicted. We are not wanting to be cold. We are not wanting to be without water. This summer, my fickle and continent husband had to go without water twice. I had to go through my, uh, to Mr. Groneman. I called David Haley. I still haven't heard his response. He never got back to my texts, my voicemails or emails. This is a problem.
I am.
You all can't communicate. This is a problem. So until some of these things can get dealt with, vote no on this budget. The other thing is the customer access fees, gotta go. We shouldn't have to pay you to treat us like this. Not acceptable. Meet with us where we are, where we have more than five minutes to discuss, because this doesn't get it. Oh, one more thing I want to thank you for. I want to thank you for one more thing. Thank you for doing this to allowing us to begin Communities' Conscious Action Network. We are now uniting. We are not playing. Thank you.
Last person here is Sarah, same address. Sarah, I can't make out your last name, so if you can come to the mic and, uh, state your name and address for the record, please.
Can, is this close enough? Okay. Hi, my name is Sarah Lynch, 737 Miami Avenue. What I have to say has pretty much been succinctly summed up by the other comments that you have heard tonight. Aside from the fact that we, the community, we, we, the people, if you will, are tired and of the taxes, of the taxation, are tired of the access fees, of the pilot fee, of the other fees that have been discussed here tonight. And we are asking for assistance from you in figuring this out. We are asking for a vote no on this budget and to, because we want to have input. We know, I know we voted you in as our board members, but we are still feeling unheard. That's a problem. And it's not just one part of the community or another part of the community. It is all of us. We are representative of the people that do not feel heard and that you guys are representing. How many times can you say represent in five minutes? I will try. I am also concerned by the fact that I've heard you guys say multiple times, "This is a business," and I've heard profit said around, but BPU is a municipal of Y, of Wyandotte government, of the unified government. That, that means you guys are a nonprofit, if I understand correctly and if the research is right. So then why do I keep hearing about the profit portion of the nonprofit when it's not, we are not seeing that come back to us? If I could get an answer on that.
I'll be, I'll be glad to interject on that one, would be that when you say profit for a nonprofit, it means there's a certain amount that it just costs to make electricity and water and deliver it. All right? But above that, you have to collect enough to maintain the system that delivers all of those products and creates those products, or else what you're doing is if you don't continue, continually maintain it, it will wear out and fall apart and the next generation will not have what we have, will not have water system and a power system. So it's, it's every generation's responsibility to make sure they're maintaining the system for themselves and the generation to come. So that's, that's why you have to sell for a little bit more than just true cost, because you have to be able to fix the system too.
Well, I'm glad that you explained that part. I would like this generation to figure out how to create a diverse energy portfolio so that our energy doesn't cost as much and that we have multiple sources to draw upon. Because when we do that, we can deduct from the costs, from the company's costs, as well as from the consumer's costs. And perhaps this could be another thing that could be put into this budget. But on top of, but aside from all of that, the bottom line is, please vote no on this budget and meet with us.
Yeah, I will, I will respond on that in that, in that I would be happy to meet with you. I would ask though for more notice, never on a, on a first or third Wednesday, because we have board meetings those nights, but you're always welcome to come to board meetings. This is how you guys become educated, the same way I became educated, was come to the meeting, listen to what goes on so that you can see what it takes behind all of the numbers to get everything done to keep this utility running for our, for our city. I mean, it, it is a nonprofit in that, in that the money that it brings in are used to deliver the products and make sure that we can deliver the products tomorrow too. That's what, that's what the money for the utility collects as far as your water and electric bills. You're talking about, you're talking about the UG?
Um, that...
So, no.
So that actually brings up the other question that I had. What is the UG responsible for and what is, what are you as the BPU board responsible for? Because I know that question's been asked before, earlier tonight, but if you could just say that again so that we have it clear.
Water and lights. Water and lights are what the utility is responsible for. The, the collection is just merely, it's on their bill because they don't have a collection. They don't have their own billing agency. Not so much collection as it's a bill. It's their billing agency. But the, the BPU, as a board member, what I concern myself, not just while I'm here, but lots of other hours that I'm studying, educating myself about the utility, is I'm worried about, are we effectively creating the water and electricity and getting it to the public and making sure that tomorrow, everything is prepared so that it can happen again? And I mean, there's so much that goes into it, so I really wish you guys would come to more meetings so you can just see the presentations and understand. And, and we send out communications, but how?
Did you finish your comments? You have about a minute left, about one minute left.
Okay, so to get this clear, the B, the UG is responsible for the taxation for the water and for the, for the water and for the light, you said?
So the BPU is responsible for collecting all the costs associated with electricity and water. That's it.
And.
No, no, that is the revenue that comes back to the utility to support utility operations. Everything else on their bill is either services that the unified government provides or taxes that, that are collected by either local or state government.
What input do you guys have on that?
We have no decision on that. We have no, I mean, those are all things decided over there that we have no control over.
Okay. All right, well.
That was the extra minute.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that ends our public comment section. We're going to move on. Oh, I'm sorry. Rob, can you unmute the person online? I'm sorry. I did, forget that.
Brian? Yes. Hi, yes, my name is Ryan McCarron. I'm at thirty seven thirty Metropolitan Avenue in KCK. I am also part of Clean Air Now, and I, I had a bunch of points I wanted to bring up, but I think everyone in this room has already addressed it, from the pilot to the raise in salaries, to the increase in rates, to the discussing of the fixed operating costs and the extra money that you guys have to collect to maintain the system. So all this has been covered, and I would just like to reemphasize that diversifying your energy sources, which is something that is not really apparent in the 2023 budget or the five-year capital plan as of yet. I've tried to read that budget as much as I could, but it takes a forensic accountant to really know all the details. Diversifying energy sources and accessing federal resources to help BPU become better and more affordable for its customers is a goal that should be in this budget rather than something to be done years from now. Just to compare, I did some research on other public utilities in the country, and I've read good things about other public utilities and their customers are satisfied. So why isn't BPU having the same satisfaction? I think the issue with the UG is one. I've tried to find the organizational charter that, that founded BPU, and I guess it's not easily accessible without a public request for information so that we can understand, does this charter need updating? Is there something we can do to improve BPU and allow them better capacity to work and serve their customers? One thing that no one brought up that I thought was interesting going through your budget for 2023 is the fact that BPU has a marketing and corporate communication section. We talked a lot about, a lot about how you are not a for-profit and how you are not a corporation. But then I look and I see this line item in the budget, and it says, "The marketing and corporate communications department works to portray a positive image of the utility and its board, management, and employees." So my question is, why do we need over a million dollars for a marketing communications department if you think that you are doing a good thing for your public? That is just an interesting point that, I guess, because everything else was said, just to add on to everything there, why do we need media relations and community relations to portray ourselves as a good public utility? Why not let your actions speak for that instead of paying someone to try to greenwash? Or I don't know what you want to call it, to make it look better. Again, everything else was said by the public, and I, I want to support them in saying that this budget should not be voted on and should be reconsidered in many aspects. And finally, I would just like to let the community know that we are of the community. We are hosting an event tomorrow to discuss these things further and amongst other things relating to environmental justice and environmental racism, and utility is one of the main discussion points. And you can all join us if you feel like it at cleanernowevents.org. Thank you.
All right, I think, I would like to thank all the guests, customers for being here tonight. We're going to now move on into general manager staff reports. So Lori, I would ask you to go ahead and come up and present our October financials.
Good evening. Tonight we'll review the October twenty-two financials. On the first slide, we're looking at our build usage for the electric side per KWH. Residential is up over our prior year as well as our commercial. We are seeing residential up about 1%. Commercial is up about 5%. And we are seeing our industrial kind of coming back to pre-pandemic levels, being up about 13%. So overall, uses is up about 5.6%. On the water side, we're seeing our residential pretty much in line with where we were in 2021. Commercial is up about 6%, and then our industrial is up about 8%. But overall, it's about 3.8%. Look, looking at our revenues, next slide. So our revenues for the month of October. Our actuals are about 30.5 million. In 2021, we were about 27.3 million. Compared to our budget, our budget's 26.8 million, so we're about 14% or about 3.7 million above our budget. Next slide. Looking from a year-to-date perspective, we're about 10.6% above 2021 levels. We were at, through October, we had actuals of 316 and a half million. That's compared to a budget of about 279 million. So we had 13 and a half percent higher. The majority of that electric, on the electric side, being up about 16%. So residential is up about 5 million. Commercial is up about 14 and a half, while industrial is up about four and a half. And then our wholesale market sales are about 10.2 million. So as I noted, the commercial industrial usage is up. That coincides with that. On the water side, we're up 2%. Residential about 300, almost 400,000. Commercial about 530,000. Industrial 115,000, as well as our wholesale is up about 170,000. Looking at our operating expenses. Our actuals for October, about 22 and a half million. Our budget was about 20.6 million, so we were up about 9%. We're up about 4 and a half percent over 2021 levels. Our fuel and purchase power overall, we had a budget of about 6.7 million, and our actual is 7.9 million. So we're up about 1.2 million. On our operating expenses year-to-date. Our previous year, expenses about 203.7 million. To date, our actual is about 237 and a half million, so it's up about 16.6%. Compared to our budget, we're up about 15%, which is about 31 million above budget. Our budget of 206 million, our actual is 237 and a half. And if you don't, in the graph there, the, the green and the red represents our fuel and purchase power cost, and that's about 51% of our expenses. This next slide takes depreciation out to look at our operating expenses of what we, we spend for infrastructure. And our overall, over 2021 levels, we're up about 18.9% from '21. We're up 17 and a half percent over budget, so we're about 203 and a half, 203 million of actuals against 173 million budget. Below there kind of identifies some of our variances to the budget with our purchase power being about 16.7 million above, our fuel about 20.1. And then our transmission and distribution are down about 4.3 million, while our general administrative is down about 2.8 million. On the water side, all operating areas and GNA are down, a million dollars in production, and GNA is down about 700,000. So we have a change in net position for the month of October. We projected to have a $1.8 million change in net position positive. In 2021, we were at 1.2 million, and so in the month of October, our actual is about 3.5 billion. And then our change in net position from a year-to-date is an actual of 31 million. Our budget projected to be about 26.6 million. And, and 2021, we were at 37.3 million. This, this takes a graphical look at our 10-year trend on our electric and revenues versus expenses, with the blue being revenue and the red being the expenses. The next slide takes a look at our water revenues and versus expenses over a 10-year period as well. And then this next slide looks at our collections. So in the month of October, we're about $2 million of collections. It is a little bit higher than in previous years, and that's related to the ERC. This is similar to our collections in September. October is typically kind of the end of our summer period. The money we're bringing in in October is from August usage and September billing. And so we're bringing in that money in October. This slide just looks at a historic, historical month cash. So we're at, at 5.5 million positive for cash. We were down last month, so it's kind of just a month. Seems like a month delay. Typically, our, our positive month is September, but it seemed like it moved to October this year. And then from a cash position, we are about 68 days of cash. Our rolling 12-month average is, is higher than it was in 2021. So we were at last month, remember, we were at 58 days, and while a year ago, we were at 79 days. Here's just a graphical look over the last four years of, of our cash days on hand. And this next slide takes a look at our cash, days cash on hand with our monthly change, which each correlates as the red line is our days cash on hand and the blue line is our change in our cash. Some of our balance sheet items, our fuel inventory is about 6.8 million that we have a fuel inventory. And we still have a couple bond issues that we're finishing up. Our 2016C has about 700,000, while our 2028 has about 800,000, and those are earmarked for projects that we have coming up next year. On our capital spending, so we have a budget of 56 million. To date, we've spent about 28 million of that. A year ago, about 27 million. Some of the major projects there is working on some of the Piper overhead feeders. It's about 930,000 in Rosedale area, the underground feeders of about 3.3 million. And then we have our annual underground and overhead projects throughout the community, 2.6 on the underground, one and a half on the overhead, and then on the water side, the work that's done on their water leaks and valves and system improvements, a million and a half transmission improvements, about 1.7 million. And then the street, the work that we do with the unified government, when they're overlaying streets that we have to work on our distribution system along with them. Last slide is our debt coverage. And with pilot, we're at 2.43 times, water's at 2.30 times, while our electric's at 2.30 times, while water's at 1.99. And then our, our debt coverage without pilot is at a combined 1.74, with electric being 1.61 and water being at 1.53. Any questions?
I've already had the time for questions here.
They're, they're, they're not preliminary. Yes.
So you're looking for approval?
Yes.
Are there any questions regarding the financials as presented?
Move to approve as, as presented.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Brian.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Groneman.
Hi.
Haley.
Hi.
Mylan.
Hi.
Malvanyi Henry.
Hi.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Next item on the agenda, it's Dennis, you want to come up? Is Dennis in the back? Dennis, can you come up to the mic, please?
Yeah.
No.
All right, so next item is self-recognition policy resolution, number 5280. We've presented it to the board. Ask Dennis to come up if you're going to ask for approval after, or if there is any other questions, hopefully.
And I would like to make, when there is one typo in this, so if it is, if you, if it is approved this. If it is approved, sorry. If it is approved this evening, I had asked that the motion be to approve it with the correction that in a section 1A2, that city be replaced with utility. I've already corrected that in the clean version, but there is that one typo.
As we've discussed in the work session, both the union and the BPU would ask for approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion to approve?
This is Jeff. I need to approve with the revision in one, or yeah, section 1A2.
This is Rose. I second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Brian.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Groneman.
Hi.
Haley.
Hi.
Mylan.
Hi.
Malvanyi Henry.
Hi.
That motion carries.
Mr. Grimm still in the room? Thank you, sir. Thank you for being patient with us, too. So next item on the agenda is Wana County redistricting resolution. We've asked Mr. Grimm to come back, and I think if you want to just update what we're approving, and I know you showed us different options for redistricting, so.
Right, I can do that. Good evening, board members. Mr. Johnson, my Grimm Unified Government Research Office. I don't have a presentation tonight, but through previous work sessions, I worked with the board to come up with a redistricting alternatives that one was selected. So redistricting happens every decade. After, after the decennial census, we, we learn that people move and shift and, and per. And, and per BPU guidelines, we have to have as close as we can to an equal number of persons in each of the three districts, so. I think we have, one of the alternatives was selected. I think we're, the board's going to vote on that one tonight.
And the board did, he showed them what, three options, or four options, and they, there was some communication back as to what they preferred.
Yeah, three options, and then I had a little feedback to kind of maybe, you know, redraw some of the boundaries that made more sense to the board members. Came back with two options, one was finally selected for this resolution.
Any questions for the board?
Hello, this is David. Hello.
Yes, David.
Yes, is this the option that Mr. Bryant brought forward? I'm sorry, I don't have a copy in front of me, and they had different numbers, but was this the one that Mr. Bryant suggested was more equitable?
Yeah. Mr. Haley, this is the one that, that basically moves the, the new district, the new precincts that I'll get are the Fairfax area, so. That end, that end of the city, yeah.
I await the motion and would support it.
This is Jeff, I move to approve the redistricting as presented.
This is Rose, I second.
Been moved and seconded, roll call please.
Roll call Bryant.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Brenneman.
Hi.
Haley.
Hi.
Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Hi.
That motion carries.
Thank you for approving both of those on the miscellaneous comments, only other update I've got is the task force for the unified government and finding a new county administrators continue to move forward. We met last week and this week. All the promotional materials, advertisements, that such are already now being sent out, they've been finally, they've been approved by everybody that needed to take a review of that, and and there has been final approval granted, so it's out, it's being sent to candidates as I speak. There is a, a line in there requesting that all people that are interested submit all their applications by the twenty-first of this month. And interviews will begin sometime next month with the hope of having all interviews by the task force completed in January. And three candidates sent forward to the mayor and to the commissioners for them to conduct interviews of those three finalists. I think that is all hopefully scheduled to conclude by February the ninth, and then hopefully an offer will be made shortly thereafter. And we will soon have a new county administrator in place. With whatever decision is made at that point. That's all the comments I have, Madam President, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Ready for board comments? Mr. Haley, do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, again, I appreciate the attendance of everyone this evening to discuss during the concept of a budget, I appreciate that participation, I regret not being there personally. The Economic Development and Finance Committee did meet on last Monday. The only thing of any import to the BPU would be, I believe, the expansion of the, oh, the bridge, the bridge project, it was really a nice presentation that, that came up, that is moving forward. We extended that so that it's going to be sixteen months from the time that construction begins, I think that's going to put us at July of twenty twenty-four for opening that, but it's, it's an impressive project. It is the Rock Island Bridge Project, and it will bring, I believe, a lot of development to the eastern half of Wyandotte County for a destination place, place to go eat and dine. And also to have some entertainment on the eastern half for a change of Wyandotte County. It was a good meeting, we did approve that to the full commission, and they'll be voting on that, and I hope they'll, they'll approve it, that was all that came from economic development, and again, appreciation to those that came out as we looked towards this budget at the next meeting and how it might benefit us, I hope we will take note, fellow members, the concerns to bifurcate, or try to bifurcate, but we have no real power to do so. That which we're required to do by the UG in terms of the taxes, pilot, et cetera, and those which we actually do bill for to keep our utilities solvent, that being electric and water use, thank you, Madam President, thank you, members.
Thank you, Mr. Haley, Mr. Brenneman.
Yeah, I don't know where to begin, maybe I'll start with, you know, my idea, or my, my, how I, what my thoughts are about the pilot. Pilot stands for payment in lieu of taxes. There are public utilities, which the BPU is, and then there are investor-owned utilities, which are evergy. Evergy pays taxes, real estate taxes, personal property taxes to the government, and let's just say Kansas City, Missouri. Because, you know, they own lines, they own poles, they have right-of-way, they pay taxes to that governmental agency. In KCK, we are part of the UG, we do not pay taxes on our poles, on our right-of-ways, on our lines and personal property, real estate. So in, in, in place of us not paying those taxes, there's a payment in lieu of tax. And that's set by the UG, the UG says, this is what you will pay us each month because you don't pay taxes because you're part of the, of the government, so that is the payment in lieu of tax. They set it, they set it between five percent and fifteen percent. There's kind of a double-edged sword, because if we lower the pilot, let's say we cut it in half, and that's fifteen million dollars, that's fifteen million dollars less that the UG collects or will get. And that just means that they're going to have to raise personal property taxes, real estate taxes, fifteen million dollars. Okay, so right now, you're, it, it, all the money that I understand that is, it's collected by the BPU, passed through to the UG, goes into the general fund to pay for streets, roads, whatever the general fund supports. They're going to get that, they need that, that's what they say they need, this thirty-seven million that we collect in pilot goes to offset real estate taxes. If I'm a business in Wyandotte County, I'm going to pay the, the pilot. If we do away with it, there are people that don't live in Wyandotte County that have businesses here that are now paying pilot that will not pay pilot, so that's going to raise the taxes even higher. So you're, it's, it's a catch-twenty-two situation. But the pilot is put on our bill, or we collect for the UG what the UG tells us to collect, and it just passed through to them. I think on another issue, that there are many of the things that were brought up this evening that I'm in agreement with, I, I agree, I think that there are many issues that we, that we are, that we agree on. I think we ought to split the bill and take the, the taxes out of the, out of the, off the bill and, and not have it on there. Of seeking funding, I don't think that it would, it's a, it's a win-win situation for the BPU and for the community that we seek funding. When the funding comes down, when it starts coming down from the federal government and rolls down to us, I'm sure that we will do everything that we can to get every dollar that we can to make things better for our people and for our utility. I don't, I don't see a problem with that, I think it's a win-win situation. It was brought up that we, about our portfolio of, we have probably the most diverse portfolio of any municipal utility around, we have almost fifty percent of our, of our portfolio is in renewables, wind, solar, that sort of thing. We also have coal, we have hydro, we have solar. So we have a diverse portfolio, if we were rely, if we relied entirely on one, one type of generation as opposed to another, or the, the portfolio that we have, we'd be held hostage to the cost of, of gas, when the gas goes up, our bills would go sky-high. But we have coal to offset that, when coal, it's, we have a diverse portfolio, so anybody that would say differently has not looked at, at our, at our portfolio. And I think that responding to the people, I would be more than happy to sit down, I know the other board members go over what was brought up this evening and respond to your questions and your issues. Sometimes you'll, like I said, we, I see a lot of areas of agreement, we would agree, there might be some areas that we, that we don't agree, would not, would not agree with, but at least we would, you know, be on record as to what, you know, what, where we stand, so. I think that's about all, I think I've said enough, that's about all I have, Mary.
Thank you, Tom, Mr. Mylan.
Well, thank you, it's been a long time coming. Probably going to start off a little different than most of you. First of all, I'm very happy to see you all here this evening. That's my number one comment. My next comment is, please come back again. You know, been here thirty-two years, I look here the first and third Wednesday every month, and I see one or two citizens. What does that tell you? Were you really concerned about the border public utility until we have a crisis, lack, raising the rates, or the salve of the general manager? Please come and be part of your questions. The best thing we have going is the first and third Wednesday every month, you can come forward, express yourself, don't wait until we have a problem. Communication, communications, communication, and we have three types of communication. One, good communication, two, misinformation, and three, no communication. And that's what we have on the first and third Wednesday every month, no communication from the public. Let me scroll over and fasten nine in this order, a couple of things you need to know about. There are three elements of our budget, there are three elements of our revenue, residential, commercial, and industry. So we talk about, well, we own the border public utility, yes you do, one-third of it. Residential owns one-third of it. Commercial owns one-third of it. And industry owns one-third of it. Those are the three revenues we receive to make sure we have O and M costs, operation and maintenance, to make sure we have a public utility to provide quality water and reliable electric power. The next thing I want to talk about is explain the pilot, like we explained several times before. But there are five things on that pilot you got to consider that comes out there. The sheriff department, police department, District Five Hundred, school board, and junior college, all of that comes out of the pilot program. But let me tell you something, that's a double deal. If you go back and look at your last mail, this last week, you got property tax they became that's due to UG government by December twentieth, and that's going to be one-half of your property tax. Look at that bill, and there are four things on that bill, you're paying twice. That's the pilot, junior college, or commercial college, community college, fire, police department, and District Five Hundred, all of those are part of what you pay on the pilot, so you're paying twice. But we could blame for one of them, so keep that in mind. So I'm just trying to let you know that there are other taxes entities that you're taxed on in addition to border publicity. All these years, we tried to communicate with the UG government, have two separate bills, this is not nothing new, we recognize that. But we are agency of the unified government, what they see, we must follow. We started off here a few years ago, I think, two oh nine, the rate for the little taxes was thirteen point nine percent. We had a meeting with the UG, all the commissioners, and all the BPU board members in two oh nine, to reduce it down from thirteen point nine down to eleven point nine. And they agreed at that time, they reduced it down two more percents by nine point nine in two years. They failed on that commitment. They failed on that commitment, that's documented, so all we can do is recommend that it should be less than thirty-four nine. All of the bonding agencies throughout the United States, Fitz, Dewey, Stan and Paul, those are three major bonding people that we borrowed money from to run these utilities. They all have recommended for the last ten years, we should pay no more than seven point nine percent for paying low taxes. UG has never agreed with that. So that's another issue we have to deal with, so I'm just trying to say in essence that we do the best we can, we have the work with. And as far as the raising the rates, you know, we can't raise the rates without several things happening. Number one, you must put on notice forty-five days before we say we need to have a hand on raising rates. How are we determined? The rates will determine by three entities, residential, commercial, and industry, those are the three people tell us how much to raise the rates. This board has nothing to do with raising rates in our own discretion. They have a consortium agreement with those three entities, they meet and determine how much it takes based upon the people to raise the rates based on population and so forth. They'll come back and say, well, we think it should be a ten percent to raise the rates on water or power. And they come back to the board and say, we recommend this, the board says, no. That's the only time we have a opportunity to have a comment on raising rates. We normally have that, we can agree or disagree. Ninety-nine percent of the time, we've always disagreed with the recommendations from residential, that's you all, commercial, and industry, they've always recommended to raise rates higher than this board approved. We have never agreed with the rate that they insist on. This board, and I've been here with fifty-two different board members, they all agreed to don't raise rates that's been recommended by the commercial, residential, and industry, you need to know that. So a lot of things we don't get credit for because we get into a vacuum. Now, we have a newsletter come out too, once a quarter, on the first page it said, did you know, that's the first item on that newspaper. We raised a lot of issues by a water control, a lot of issues, cold temperature, hot temperatures, winter, and so and so forth. We've always had a cool water policy for, I don't know how many, every year, we've had that. All of the utilities, including the gas company and the state, everybody comes out, everyone, and makes sure you're aware of the cold weather policy. So the cold weather policy is not nothing new, we just make sure you know again in December what the policy is. Come next June, we'll come back again and tell you what the hot weather policy is, we'll let you know that in advance. So you have many opportunities to come here, express yourself, don't wait until you're mad at us. And here's the unfortunate thing. People hate bill collectors, and I'm number one of that, there's no bill from the UG monthly. There's no bill from you, from the District Five, from the school board. There's no bill from the sheriff department monthly, there's no bill from the police department monthly, but every month, the bad guy is the border public utility, because we all hate bill collectors. We are bill collectors, just like Matthew in the Bible, you know, he's a bill collector, so we part of the same situation. We are bill collectors, and that's unhappy. We are bill collectors, and that's unhappy with the persons like you and myself have to pay your utility bill once a month. It's too high, most utility bills are too high across America. And if you look at the system, every time there's a disaster, the most important thing, we need some water and bring the power lights back on again. Fortunately enough, we've been able to make sure we respond almost instantly when we have a crisis. So you prepare for that. And the most important, you need to know, your utility bill is recycled. We bill you, we collect it, and we turn it back on, back and forth. We have no profit, we are a non-profit entity. That means December thirty-first, within two weeks from now, that night, at midnight, we have one dollar left over over our operation maintenance costs, we chose it too much. It's not the case. What's left over, we have in terms of that, it goes strictly to the UG general budget. Each year, we've been able to foster and promote additional money UG government, January one each year, eight or nine million dollars that they can use at their discretion. That's your money, that's our money. We have no profits to maintain. We must make sure we have enough money to make sure you have quality water and reliable electric power. Let me see if I have something else that's out of there. I think you need to know that out of two thousand and eight public utilities across the United States of America, this utility in the top one hundred. As a matter of fact, we are number fifty out of two thousand public utilities, including everything, your complaints, the pilot, our rates, income, population, and so forth. You need to be a part of that. This young man, this writer of me called Mr. Johnson, he won the top utility management in the United States of America. He happens to be a guest, that's my complexion. I'm happy about that. I'm proud of that. I worked in this community eighteen years, making sure a representation from this board represents people like myself. I saw this board in nineteen ninety-one. There were probably one supervisor of a minority, maybe one or two. There you can't count them, number one is over there. That's important to know that. We've done a great job in making sure the community looks like it's supposed to look like. And just recently, this community voted the second minority on this board, Mr. Haley. I sit here thirty-two years by myself, trying to represent all of us. I don't believe in that race and race, just be fair. That's my decision. Just be fair, folks, regardless of the race, color, or any other incident you may have. When this country learns how to be fair is more important than the color of your skin. Don't forget that. God bless you.
Mr. Bryant, thank you, Bob. Mr. Bryant?
You guys have heard a lot from me tonight, so I'll be brief. Now, since I was elected in two thousand and eleven, every single commissioner that's come and gone on the the commission of the unified government, I have spoken and told that of the concern of the constituents of my district with the confusion on the dual bills and the burden of the excessive pilot amount. I mean, I, I would happily, uh, sign off on a on a proclamation that the BPU board sends to the unified government, but at the end of the day, it it takes them hearing voices. And and but to hear voices, you got, people have to be in attendance, whether in person or on a Zoom call. That's why I will repeat again, you, I welcome everyone to be here every time we have a meeting, or at least online, and watch the presentations and learn about your utility. That's, the more you know about the utility, the better educated we all are, and the better decisions we can make for our city's future, so. Thank you very much for being here, I appreciate it. And thank you especially to you who stayed for the the whole thing.
I'd like to echo, uh, the thanks that the rest of the board has said for, um, our community to come out and voice your opinion. If I got over-exuberant with this, it's because I'm a retired teacher and I only like one person talking at a time. So, um, you're always welcome on the first and third Wednesday to come back and express your, um, your views and your opinion, we're, we're here every other Wednesday for that. I'd also like to thank, um, Jerry for your presentation during work session, uh, on the KPIs. That was excellent, and I know we've been waiting for it for a while, so thank you for that. Uh, and please give, express that to your team, since they're they're not here. Rose, it's your turn.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So I also want to echo, uh, the sentiment of, uh, that that Mary just made with respect to Jerry and your team on the executive dashboard that we heard about and and saw in the work session. Uh, very long time coming, and, uh, really appreciate your entire team's work on that. Um, I know that's going to be an extremely useful tool, uh, for the utility. And, um, I think Jeff, you know, mentioned this in the work session as well, and and I think it's really going to, um, to to make sure that, uh, we are good stewards of the utilities, uh, finances of going forward, so thank you very much for that. Um, so, a lot of folks visiting us tonight, other board members have said it. I hope that you guys continue to come to these meetings, and I hope that you continue to express your opinions and share with the board, as well as the rest of the public in Kansas City, Kansas, what your experiences are. I think that I think that the BPU still has a significant transparency issue. And it's something that, um, certainly I've worked on in in my three years on the board. And I think it's, it's getting better. I don't think it's anywhere where the public deserves it to be. So that's something I'm going to continue to push for. Um, all of the folks who are members of the Community Consciousness, uh, Action Network, thank you guys for coming tonight. Um, I'm sorry that I couldn't be there in person. Um, I've got a COVID situation over in my house, so, um, I I wish I could be there though, because I've never been in the boardroom where we've had this many visitors, and this is actually exciting to me. Um, I I love the energy that you guys are bringing to these issues. Um, I love the experience that you're bringing to the issues. And, you know, Mr. Groneman said it, he said he'd be happy to meet with you. Um, I, I echo that. I meet with many of you, I talk with many of you. Um, I have no problem meeting in a bigger group or smaller group if I'm in town. And, um, you know, y'all can reach me at rhenry@bpu.com. My cell number is nine one three five five eight six seven seven eight. Um, I will, I will respond as I am able. Um, you know, I'm, I'm a firm believer that an organization's budget should reflect its values. And That is not me, just FYI.
Rob, can you, uh, can you?
Thank you. Um, so, so a lot of you have spoken about the budget, some of you, I'm sure, have reviewed it um, in detail. Um, others may not have had that opportunity yet, I know there's a lot of information to review. Um, you know, but one of the things that I did talk about in our budget work session on Monday was the fact that this board allocates five hundred thousand dollars a year as a bu- as a budget line item for economic development purposes. In my time on the board in three years, we've never allocated the entire five hundred thousand dollars to that for those purposes. And my suggestion to the board is to reallocate, including this year, twenty twenty-two, the remaining two hundred fifty thousand dollars in that bu- in the budget for this year, to reallocate it for use for utility assistance. Um, you know, it's not a lot of money, but it it can be a lot of money to our residents who are hurting um, and continue to have economic, um, you know, issues. And that's well within our authority to do. Somebody asked earlier, one of the gentlemen asked earlier, what exactly is our authority? I'm surprised nobody gave the pat line, which is a thing I have heard many times here, and that is we are supposed to approve the budget and hire and fire the general manager. That's what I'm told that a board member's authority is. And I don't read the charter that way, but that is the way it has been interpreted for a number of years. Um, I think that that this board can do more for our community, and I hope that going forward, we do just that. So I don't know if if we need to formally take up, uh, in the meeting on December twenty-first, uh, my suggestion, Madam Chair, on reallocating these funds um, left over from the economic development budget, but I'll leave it, I guess, your discretion or Ms. Lawson, your discretion as to how we maybe want to handle that. That's all I have for the night, thank you.
I'll discuss it with legal.
Thank you.
One more, one more, just one
Okay.
brief comment. I just want to thank, uh, those members of the, uh, the community that stayed and listened to the comment, the board comments, didn't just come make your speech and then leave. I I I just want to thank you for staying and showing that respect, so thank you very much.
My, 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 my final comment is, I want to say, I have in front of me eleven examples of what goes into the budget. One, two, different departments, three, four, water, five, liquid products, six, supply, technology, accounting, human resource, man. Folks, we don't come with the play. These direct managers do what they can to make sure that the budget, human judgment, employees, salaries, all of them costs is done independently, division by division, making sure the property knows we're going to have a budget hearing. We let you know December twenty-first, we approve it one way or the other. We're not here playing, folks, this is business.
Can we get a copy?
Just now.
There's a copy, uh, there's a copy of all of those documents on our website.
Yeah. And communication is the key word I've heard all night long. And I can say this, when we don't communicate everything, some is missing. That's the purpose of a public utility, to make you sure you have an opportunity to come express it. You know, you got six board members you can call, first and third, when you can do that. So it's it's present, we are transparent, to make sure you have an opportunity. So I want you to know, you know, your effort here tonight didn't go in vain, I'm glad to see you. I'm happy to see you. Come back next week, we need to know how you feel. And I'm talking about communication, I think I'm gonna give Mr. Gordon a compliment, a very seldom do this, will let you know decisions that were made, other than a newsletter we have come out once a quarter. You need to know exactly some of the things that were discussed that you're not even present. So communication is a key across the world, not just BPU. Communication can never be done enough for it. We are being blamed for that, and I see you raise your hand and so forth, which call we do, we can to communicate. Good, bad, and different, you need to know what's going on, folks. We don't have a newspaper anymore, everybody's dealing with online and all that kind of stuff, technology, but everybody don't read email every day, folks. You don't read, but that's my comments, but please come back again, because if you don't talk to us, we can't talk to you. Saying simple.
It's on all of the ordinances, charter and regular are online at the unified government's website. The proposed motion for adoption is as follows. I move that after taking a five-minute break, the board go into executive session for twenty minutes in the first floor conference um, room to discuss confidential matters related to employment of the general manager. Personal matter of non-elected personnel is justified under that exception in the Kansas Up and Meetings Act, and that the general manager, William Johnson, and Deputy Chief Counsel Angela Lawson be present to participate in the discussion. And that we reconvene in open session, returning to both electronic and telephonic and public broadcasting at Q eight thirty-three in the boardroom to either take action in an open session or to adjourn.
This is Jeff, move to go into executive section.
Tom, my second.
We moved to executive, roll call, please.
Roll call, Bryant.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Groneman.
Hi.
Haley. I'll come back. Mylan.
You cool guy.
Thank you. Mulvaney, Henry.
Hi.
Hi.
Haley, okay.
Just unmute it, okay, Haley.
Thank you, that motion carries.
All right, five minutes and then in the
This is Jeff, I make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Yeah, she's a board member.
Roll call, Bryant.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Groneman.
Hi.
Mylan.
Hi.
That motion carries, this meeting is adjourned.